Good morning, everyone, and welcome to this morning's Jefferson County Board of Commissioners meeting for July 22, 2025. Thanks so much for being here this morning. I'm Jefferson County Commissioner Leslie Dahl Kemper, here with Commissioners Zenzinger and Kerr, and our clerk this morning is Zahra Murad, and our host is Ana Zendehas, who will handle requests for public comment and public testimony sign up in the chat for those of you who are joining us virtually. There are several ways to join our hybrid meeting, all of which are listed on our website at jeffco.us. You're always welcome to reach out to the board on the county's website at jeffco.us or by email at commish@jeffco.us. We would like everyone to please silence your phones, if you would, for our hearing today, and join us next for the Pledge of Allegiance. Next on our agenda is public comment, and the board will take up to 15 minutes of public comment at the beginning of our meeting, and then we have a second round of public comment at the end of our meeting. Public comment is specifically for items that are not currently listed on our board agenda. Each person has three minutes to address the board, and we will begin with those who have signed up for public comment, and we'll also check to see if we have anyone joining us virtually who would like to share their comments as well. If you are joining us virtually, we ask that you log into our meeting using a computer, and please send a note in the chat to our host with your full name, your address, and the topic. When it's your turn to speak, the host will give you permission to unmute yourself, and please know that the chat function is seen only by the host and no comments are retained in the record. And let me pull up our sign-in sheet for this morning. It looks like we have three people who have signed up to provide public comment this morning, and we'll check with Ms. Zendehas in just a moment to see if we have anyone joining us online. If you are interested in providing public comment, we ask that you come forward, and please feel free to grab a seat up front. First, we have Zee Williams, who is speaking on the topic of Jack Skratan. And we'll ask you, as you're coming forward, to please share your name, your address, and you have three minutes. Welcome.
Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Zee Williams. My pronouns are they and them. I'm not going to state my address publicly for privacy purposes, but it is on that form. I'm coming to you as the co-director and co-founder of Bread and Roses Legal Center. I'm also a Jefferson County resident. I was just waiting for my time to start. Thank you. And I'm here to ask that you engage with independent oversight of Jack Skratan's death investigation. My first reason is simple: Colorado coroners are elected. That means that their position is shaped by personal, professional, and political relationships. Dr. Cannon has many traditional qualifications for her roles, but she also has a network of relationships with the three members of the Jefferson County Board that do not allow for objectivity and impartiality. Every profession governed by ethical obligations contemplates the notion of conflict of interest, and I ask that you do that as well. This is a demonstration of professionalism. The second reason I ask for this is probably more difficult. It's a harder conversation to have, and that's that there's been multiple missteps in this process by Dr. Cannon and her office that has led to a fundamental breach of trust and faith in Jack Skratan's death investigation. The Colorado Coroner Code of Ethics expects that coroners do some of the following: participate in their practice with honesty, integrity, competence, compassion, and fairness; obey all laws and adhere to regulations of my department; confidentiality; confidentiality will be kept at all times; personal feelings, prejudices, and friendships will not influence decisions; that there will be compassion, integrity, and to seek the consultation and use the talents and knowledge of others. IACME, which Jeffco Coroner is also a part of, states that members have a responsibility towards society in relationships to matters of public health, medical science, research, education, and legislation affecting the health and well-being of local community. It expects that the coroner does not conduct themselves in any manner which might bring their profession into dispute of public confidence. Dr. Cannon and her office have contacted the inappropriate next of kin for Jacks on more than one occasion. They spoke disparagingly about the mother to law enforcement. They referred to Jack's body in dehumanizing and traumatizing ways, kept her body for longer than needed, argued and downplayed the concerns of the mother -- sorry, I heard my go -- downplayed the concerns of the mother and her advocate, refused to listen to important information from the family, spoke to Jack's mother and advocate like we were petulant children asking for candy, not asking for justice for a dead trans woman. These actions have caused the scale of harm and trauma to the family, friends, and community that keep me up at night, frankly, and keep us from trusting the county and pursuing this investigation in good faith. Trans people are some of the most marginalized and misunderstood people in this country. That makes it even more important that this investigation be done with great integrity and allow the community to have full faith. Please, please help us get oversight for Jack Skratan.
Thank you this morning for your comments. Next, we have Ken Keeper. Please come forward and share with us your address, and also the topic is Jack Skratan.
Mine is also listed on the sheet. I would like to keep that private, please.
You bet. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Brother Ken Unity Keeper, and I am here today representing Colorado's chapter of the Sisters of Perpetual Indulgence. I'm also here as a resident of Colorado, a community advocate, a trans man, a supporter of Jack Skratan's family and friends, and most importantly, as one of Jack's warriors. We come to you today not for fun, but out of necessity, because Jack's -- justice for Jacks, my sister in spirit and faith, has yet to be delivered. Her case remains shrouded in missteps, contradictions, and erasure, and through it all, her loved ones have been forced to fight, not only for answers, but for basic human dignity. Jacks was a business owner. She was an advocate, a giver, a woman of deep faith, a person who has made others smile even when she had every reason to cry, and she was also a transgender woman, something that we have to say out loud here, because it is the very thing that we fear is colored how this investigation has been handled. Jack's mother, Sherilyn, has been spoken over, minimalized, and misinformed. Key facts have been mishandled and ignored. A public statement, including Jack's dead name, has caused further trauma to a family already shattered by grief. These are not just oversights; they are failures of a process of accountability and basic human compassion. What if Jacks was your daughter? What if she was your niece? What if she was your sister? What if she was yours, not ours? How would you respond? Would you sit back and continue to believe anything that we've been told? Would you sit back and continue to believe that this is being handled appropriately? I wouldn't, and I don't. And today, we demand the approval of an independent oversight board, not just in Jack's name, but in the name of every family who deserves transparency and every marginalized person whose truth is too often ignored. This board must not be symbolic. It must have real authority, clear structure, and protected independence from the very agencies that it seeks to hold accountable. You may be tempted to think this is an isolated case, but we know better. The pattern is clear: when systems are left to police themselves, the most vulnerable among us pay the price. What we are asking for today is not radical; it is responsible. It is what a just government does when trust has been broken. We are not going away. We are not backing down. We are not going to let the legacy of Jack Skratan be one of silence. We are here to say her name, to demand oversight, and to keep fighting until justice has a structure. Rest in power, Jacks. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. And next, we have Brandy Carey. Topic is also Jack Skratan.
Good morning. My name is Brandy Carey. My address is also on the form, and I would like to keep that private, just in case. Good morning, and thank you, Commissioners, for allowing us to speak before you today. I kindly ask that you take the time to truly hear us. I stand before you to insist that an independent oversight task force be created to oversee the investigation into the disappearance and death of our beloved Jack Skratan. I've known Jacks for five years. In 2020, she came into the Solon Suite building. I managed to decide on opening business for herself. We quickly became friends, and I quickly fell in love with her spirit. I wish you all had the chance to get to know Jacks the way I did. I think you would understand why this is just so important to us. Jacks left her apartment for the final time on April 15, around 10:00 p.m. We didn't realize she was gone until April 23. The 24th, the missing persons report was formally filed by her mother, and her remains were found on June 6. That's 52 days since she last left her apartment. And in those 52 days, I, along with the others behind me and many others who are not able to be here with us today, fought with all we could to find her and bring her home. Mama C., as we have lovingly come to call her, has endured a series of deeply unsatisfactory and often demute, dehumanizing encounters with both offices. She should have been met with compassion, care, respect, and a sense of dignity for her daughter, and she was actually made to feel dismayed, dismissed, and disrespected. She was met with a serious lack of communication, and on multiple occasions, she was spoken to in a condescending tone, once even made to feel as though she was imposter, pretending to be Jack's mother. On June 12, at 10:00 a.m., I received a call from the Jefferson County Coroner's Office and was asked a question about a specific gender-affirming surgery of Jack's that should have been handled by her mother. Although I knew the answer, I told him I need to make a phone call to Jack's mother to confirm. I spoke with Sherilyn, confirmed the information, returned the call to the Commissioners -- to Gordon at the Coroner's Office, and told him I spoke with Jack's mom and gave him the answer to his question. The implications of my answer and his response to it broke my heart, but that call had more serious consequences. Due to the lack of internal organization and proper record-keeping, the Coroner's Office incorrectly stated that I was Jack's mother, making it harder for Mama C. to get the information she needed and to get the body of Jack Skratan released to her family and community members. And that release was not made in a timely manner. Rather than compounding a grieving mother's trauma with lack of empathy and common decency, the coroner and Cannon could have simply called the Lakewood Police Department to confirm that Sherilyn is, in fact, Jack Skratan's mother. A single phone call, one. Jacks was a victim of what or who, we do not have the answers, but her mother, Sherilyn, is also a victim, a victim of insurmountable loss and a victim to our justice system. Please put yourself in her shoes. I have one more line, please. Please put yourself in her shoes and Jack's shoes. If this were your loved one, you would demand a certain level of respect, professionalism, decorum, and a thorough dignified investigation. We expect that for our loved one, Jacks, and we expect that for all trans people. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. I'm going to ask if there's anyone else in the hearing room who would like to provide public comment at this point. Okay, and I'll circle back one more time. I understand that we also have someone joining us online. We have with us, bear with me one moment, Ashley Young, Ashley Young, who would also like to speak on the topic of Jack Skratan. Please go ahead with your comments. You have three minutes.
Okay. Good morning, and thank you for hearing us today.
I'm so sorry. You're coming through. We can hear you, but it sounds muffled and quiet.
Strange. Can you hear me a little bit better now?
A little bit better, yes. Still muffled, but your volume's up a bit. We'll try and turn you up here in the hearing room as well.
My end. I'm so sorry. Good morning, and thank you for hearing us today. My name is Ashley Young, and I am a missing persons advocate. I've been advocating for a missing person since 2014, and found that my loved one was missing, which I set up for a nonparticular purpose to, you know, educate family and friends of missing persons, like, "Please," that sort of thing. Now, while the Coroner and Chief of Police have many years of experience, both of them do, they both have a great career history, they lack the --
I'm sorry. I'm so sorry to interrupt. Let me just give us one second, and is there any -- I'm just going to ask our team, is there anything on our end that we can do? Is it -- it's -- okay. We think it may be your connection, and --
That's strange.
-- would you like to try -- yeah, logging back into the meeting? We can wait for a few minutes, if you'd like to try.
Yes, I will try real quick to log out and log back in. Thank you.
Now you sound good. Now you sound -- whatever you did, whatever you did right there, that was good.
Anything, yes. Okay. Now, as I was saying, that both the coroner and the Chief of Police have many years of experience and great careers history, they do lack the experience needed in handling trans cases. Their lack of experience with trans cases has been apparent and demonstrates why independent oversight is needed, not just for Jack's case, but all cases involving marginalized communities. You know, I echo the sentiments that were stated in the three people before me. You know, think -- imagine that this was your loved one. How would you feel through all of this with all of these issues that have been brought up? Again, thank you for hearing me today and dear demanding oversight in this case. I hope you guys have a good day.
Thank you very much for being here this morning and for sharing your comments as well. Ms. Zendehas, I'm going to ask, while we have you, is there anyone else who is joining us online who would like to provide public comment?
No one else.
All right, and I'll ask, is there anyone else in our audience this morning who would like to provide public comment to the board? All right, thank you all for being here. We appreciate your taking the time this morning to be here, to share your current concerns with us, and thank you so much for being here. We're going to move forward with our agenda, and next up, we have minutes, and we're going to move for the approval of the minutes dated July 8, 2025. But I understand Commissioner Zenzinger would like to make a correction to the minutes. Commissioner Zenzinger.
Yes, thank you so much, Madam Chair. There is, in my report, a slight correction on the name of the park. It is the Alderfer Three Sisters Park, not the Olderfer, so I just needed to make that one slight correction.
Great. Thank you so much for making that correction. We appreciate it. May I have a motion to approve with the correction entered into the record by Commissioner Zenzinger?
I move for the approval of the minutes as corrected for July 8, 2025.
Second. Ms. Murad, would you please call the vote?
Commissioner Kerr?
Aye.
Commissioner Zenzinger?
Aye.
Commissioner Dahl Kemper?
Yes, and that motion passes. Next, we have 11 items on the consent agenda. Commissioners, would either of you like to take an item off of the consent agenda?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you. May I have a motion to approve items 6.1 through 6.11?
I move for the approval of consent agenda items 6.1 through 6.11.
Second.
Ms. Murad, would you please call the vote?
Commissioner Kerr?
Aye.
Commissioner Zenzinger?
Aye.
Commissioner Dahl Kemper?
Yes, and that motion passes. Next is our regular agenda. We have no agenda items on our regular agenda. Next, we have Sheriff Reggie Marinelli, I'm sorry, Marinelli, who will join us to present the second quarter Law Enforcement Authority Report. We'll now adjourn as the Board of County Commissioners and reconvene as the Board of Directors for the Law Enforcement Authority. May I have a motion to adjourn and reconvene as the LEA?
I move we adjourn as the Board of County Commissioners and convene as the Law Enforcement Authority Board of Directors.
Is there a second?
Second.
And Ms. Murad, would you please call the vote?
Commissioner Kerr?
Aye.
Commissioner Zenzinger?
Aye.
Commissioner Dahl Kemper?
Yes, and that motion passes. Sheriff Marinelli, you heard my Chicago A. accent come through there every now and then. Please go ahead with your report. It's great to see you this morning. Glad you're here.
Good morning. Great to see you as well. So, the LEA report is both on the county website and on ours, so we'll go through just a few highlights today and get into further discussion on a couple topics. So, we have graduated two classes already, one a post-certified class and another one a detention's certified academy, and we are slowly but surely getting our numbers up to where we are on paper as far as full-time employees when it comes to sworn staff. We started an academy this last week with 30 recruits, all for Jefferson County. So, we are getting up to that staffing level that we should be, and we still have a little ways to go, but we're hoping to get there in the next year and a half, two years at the most. So, wildland fire management, I know that we have all talked about this quite a bit in the last few months. We are in the process of hiring those new staff members that we were approved for, along with getting the equipment to go with them. As you are fully aware, we do have a, I want to say, type 5 fire truck? Type 4? Type 5? I don't remember what type it is.
The gray truck.
So, our fire mitigation crew will be using that on a regular basis. It will be out and about. A lot of people are wondering, and we've talked about the fire mitigation so much, but one of the things people are wondering is what difference that's going to make. Well, the main difference between law enforcement and fire personnel are that we are always out on the street, patrolling, where fire departments are reactive. When they get a call, they go out. This fire mitigation fire truck will be out seven days a week with our new staff, so it will be working and actually out in the field every day, so it will be more proactive and able to go immediately to something that starts versus being in a garage and people having to get in it and go. So, it can be strategically placed, working on fire mitigation, and ready to go at any instant that a fire were to break out. And so, that's one of the main differences with us having a fire truck. It is not a full-fledged, big, huge fire truck. It is primarily for fire mitigation and roadside work. And so, I know a lot of the public have been asking questions about that. We had our courage walk on April 12 this last quarter. It was a great success, bringing everybody together with connection and part of the healing process for those crime victims and survivors. Another thing we've started was the first jail resource fair. This is for our jail population, and we did both the women population, the men population, and it was a chance for the inmates that are getting very close to being released back out into the community to find a place to live, job training ideas for them, mental health preparation for them while -- when they get out, addiction recovery, and everything that they would need to have a better chance of succeeding on the outside. This was the first one we have ever done. We plan on doing it more and more and trying to get this to the point where it is done at least monthly, to where those people getting out of our custody have a fighting chance at anything they need to be able to succeed on the outside and get their feet underneath them. And the bottom line is, is our efforts to try to keep them from coming back into our custody. Going into some of the priorities, we did do an emergency management, full-scale flood-related exercise in Evergreen this last quarter. We had 150 participants from 10 different agencies. This drill was a coordination, and it helps us to practice for when there is a full-fledged situation. So, we're able to work on the communication skills, evacuation procedures, what's going out to the public, and some strategies on how to do that better to inform them. So, the citizen volunteers played evacuees. The nice thing about this one, we had just rolled out our Blue Envelope program, and that was actually brought in to this full-scale exercise. We're looking at another one here in the next few months, and so, we like to make sure that we are working in coordination, because when a situation happens, especially one that could be deemed as a disaster, we don't want to wait until it happens for us to be prepared with the other jurisdictions that we need to collaborate with. So, these full-scale exercises help us to work with all the fire agencies, with the search and rescue, everybody, the hospitals, you name it. And so, when we practice with everybody at the table, we are more prepared for when we have to go into full action when a disaster actually happens. We also took part in the Evergreen Parade and Rodeo, and several community events between HOAs, meetings, crime prevention through environmental design. We do surveys every quarter and tours of our headquarters. We are never dismissive of anybody that wants to meet with either myself or anybody within our agency, and so, we have been doing several community group meetings just to talk about what's going on in the community, what's going on in the country, and things like that. It was nice to have one of our school resource officers recognized as a Denver Seven Everyday Hero. That is not something that we nominated our deputy for, but the schools did. She takes her lunch hour. She's one of our school resource officers, so she's embedded in the school to begin with. But she noticed that some of the kids were doing some crocheting during their lunch breaks, so she joined them and now has this entire group that meets weekly to do crocheting at lunch. This is one of the things our SROs are really good at, is embedding themselves in that school, but not necessarily as that law enforcement intimidating person, but somebody that can get in there with the kids and develop a relationship and teach them that law enforcement is there for a reason, and that gives the kids the ability to be able to communicate more freely with the deputies and let us know what's going on so that we can even do our jobs better. And so, that was a nice surprise to have her be nominated and awarded one of the Denver Seven Everyday Heroes. So, getting into some notable investigations, there's been a lot of good police work out there. We have had a prolific car thief, and he was a member of the organized retail theft. They always give him these nice little names, the Swiper Gang. He was caught, and it was -- when he was caught, his car was full of stolen tools from a store after nearly two years investigating this person and these crimes. Using fingerprints, DNA evidence, and interviews, we were able to get the person in custody. He pled guilty on June 2 for aggravated robbery and menacing, and he is now looking at anywhere from four to 12 years. So, when I talk about fingerprints, DNA, things like that, those are the tools that we use, and we're going to talk about a lot of tools today. There's another situation where through surveillance footage, we were able to get a career burglar who had done numerous thefts across the town of Morrison, six incidences in May alone, and then there was a break-in of a residence where he made himself at home. This is somebody who's pretty comfortable in his criminal behaviors, went into a residence, began cooking himself meals, took a shower, took a nap. This was all in a vacant house. So, through surveillance equipment, and most importantly, through positively identifying him through a fingerprint on a coffee mug, it was able to tie him to all of these crimes. So, again, tools of the trade, where we are able to get fingerprints and then eventually be able to cross those over to the actual person that owns the fingerprints. We did two high-risk search warrants with the SWAT team. They were pretty busy this last quarter. It resulted in 10 arrests, 13 firearms that were seized, including two short-barrel rifles and one suppressor, a stolen motorcycle, and drugs. And so, once these warrants are put out and we deem it necessary for the SWAT team to go in and do those arrests, we have great success in getting those done, not only in prepping the warrants for those cases, but making sure that everybody comes out of those safe and no harm done to anybody. Our traffic operations have been in the news quite a bit lately. We can talk a little bit about that, and we'll talk about that with some of the tools that we use coinciding with the attempted kidnapping of an eight-year-old, which I think most people are aware of, because that one was very publicized. So, the little girl that the subject approached in the Safeway parking lot in South Jeffco and tried to usher her out, and she was with her grandmother, and he attempted to do this not once, but twice. I know there's been a lot of questions, and especially even in the last 24 hours on the news with Denver on flock cameras. We would not have caught this suspect had it not been for flock cameras. And so, we can go into, I'm sure during the question period at the end here, on how our flock cameras work. Just in the last quarter, we have been able to capture 12 suspects in 12 different cases based on the flock able to capture 12 suspects in 12 different cases based on the flock cameras. So they are a tool that we use, and we use them in a manner to assist us with those hot pursuits. And so, again, that suspect would not have been captured had it not been for the flock cameras. And since we have put those into use in the last two to three years, there are so many crimes that have been positively identified and the completion based on flock cameras. And so I want to be able to let you guys ask the questions. We can talk about it and let the citizens that are here in person or watching online to be able to understand a little bit more about what flock cameras do and the capabilities and how we use them. So at the end, we do have all the crime statistics. Right now in Jefferson County, we're watching them closely. They are still continuing to go down, which is good, but we still watch them very carefully because if something starts to go up, we want to be able to try to figure out why and put a stop to that before it gets out of hand. So going to the flock cameras, I will go in a little bit more detail. Several years back, prior to me becoming sheriff, and this has nothing to do with that, but the flock cameras were brought in to the state of Colorado primarily, especially in the metro area, because of the tremendous amount of car thefts that we had. The flock cameras were brought in, and we were able to go from being the number-one state in the country with car thefts to combating that using flock cameras. Flock cameras do not, they have no way of determining exactly who's in a car or who the person is driving a car. The flock cameras are used to identify the vehicles, the license plates, and like I said, primarily in a hot pursuit-type situation, such as the little girl that was attempted to be kidnapped. We were able to catch him within minutes because of the flock camera system. We had a car, we had a license plate. We put that plate into flock. We now know where it's going based on where our cameras are. There are several HOAs that also own camera systems in Jefferson County. In order for us to look at those HOA cameras, they have to give us permission. Just like our cameras, we have to give permission to other jurisdictions, such as Arvada, Golden, Lakewood, to look at our flock cameras for their assistance when they need them in a crime that's happened in their jurisdictions. So we can go as far as to put a white vehicle, partial license plate. The only thing we are going to get out of those systems is any white vehicle that has that partial plate. Again, we're not going to be able to tell who's driving it. So flock cameras do not follow people. It is a tool for us to be able to go after the vehicles that are used in crimes. We still have to have probable cause that a crime was committed. We still have to have probable cause that that vehicle or the person in it, driving it, is the person that we are looking for for the crime. So technically, we have to have a double coat of probable cause to go after any crime. First of all, we have to have that probable cause, again, that the crime was committed, and then that the person or the vehicle we're looking at is most likely the vehicle or the person responsible for that crime. So at this point in time, I am going to go ahead and stop there because I know that there will be questions, because I've had those conversations with some of you one-on-one.
Great. Thanks so much, Sheriff, for the report. And we also appreciate how visible you are in our community, you and your team. And it was great for us to join you for both the Evergreen Parade, for the Courage Walk recently, and a number of these wonderful events. And thanks, too, to you and your team for the recent tour of the Training Center, as well as the Evergreen Precinct, and what that might mean for future conversations and decisions. And certainly, the most excited about the massive investment that we have made, thanks to Jefferson County voters approving ballot measure 1A on our Wildland Fire Program, and a special shout-out to Wildland Fire Manager, I hope I have his new title correct, Brian Keating, for his leadership on this front alongside with you. With that, I'll turn it over to our commissioners. Do you have any questions at this time or comments?
Thank you. I do not, I think you've been, I know over the last couple of months, you and I have had a couple of discussions. Residents have reached out to me, us, and I believe to you and your department, with questions and concerns around the flock cameras. And you and your department have been extremely open, transparent, answered every question. And knowing that sometimes, as you described, you know, people want to know, are these flock cameras being used in ways that they shouldn't? It sounds like in other places in the country, perhaps they have. But I really appreciate your open, transparent answers and information that what the guardrails are here in Jefferson County. We can't control everyone else around the country, but obviously, we can figure out what guardrails we have. And I appreciate you sharing those. And I don't have any further questions.
Great. Any other questions or comments at this time? Okay. Thanks so much, Sheriff, for being here. We always appreciate seeing you. Thanks for all you do to keep us safe, too.
Thank you.
All right. We will now need to adjourn as directors for the Law Enforcement Authority and reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners. May I have a motion to adjourn and reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners?
I move we adjourn as the Law Enforcement Authority Board of Directors and reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners.
Second. Thank you. Ms. Murad, would you please call the vote?
Director Kerr?
Aye.
Director Zenzinger?
Aye.
Director Dahlkemper?
Yes, and that motion passes. Next is the hearing consent portion of our meeting, and we have one item on the consent agenda. Ms. Murad, would you please read Hearing Consent Agenda Item 10.1 into the record?
Resolution CC25-195, case number 25-106293, RZ rezoning. Case name, Sean C. Williams and Michelle L. Williams Official Development Plan. Owner slash applicant, Sean C. Williams and Michelle L. Williams. Location, 14880 West 58th Avenue, Golden. Approximate area, 1.02 acres. Purpose, to rezone from agriculture to a planned development that falls a residential. One-zone district and allows a maximum of two lots for single-family detached dwellings. Case manager, Jamie Hartig.
Thank you so much. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to remove this item from the consent agenda? And I'll ask, is there anyone online, Ms. Dejas, who would like to remove the item from consent?
No one online.
Great, thank you. Commissioners, would you like to pull this item off?
No, thank you.
Okay, great. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda item 10.1?
I move for the approval of Hearing Consent Agenda Item 10.1.
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Murad, would you please call the vote?
Commissioner Kerr?
Aye.
Commissioner Zenzinger?
Aye.
Commissioner Dahlkemper?
Yes, and that motion passes. Thank you so much. Next, we'll move to the hearing regular portion of our meeting. We have one item on the hearing regular agenda, and Ms. Murad, I'll turn it back over to you to please read Hearing Regular Agenda Item 11.1 into the record.
Resolution CC25-196, case number 24-113412, RZ rezoning. Case name, Palo Verde Park Estates Official Development Plan. Owner slash applicant, Joy O. Young, Revocable Trust. Location, 3942 South Palo Verde Road, Evergreen. Purpose, rezone from agriculture and commercial, one to a planned development, which follows the Mountain Residential. Three-zone district and allows up to 12 dwelling units, made up of either single-family dwellings, two-family dwellings, or a combination thereof. Case manager, Sarah Homeyer.
Great, thank you so much. And we'll go next to our case manager with planning and zoning here in Jefferson County, Sarah Homeyer, for a brief presentation on item 11.1.
Good morning. My name is Sarah Homeyer, and today we will be discussing case number 24-113412, RZ, a rezoning case located at 3942 South Palo Verde Road. The applicant is requesting to create a new planned development, the Palo Verde Park Estates Official Development Plan, or ODP, following the uses and standards defined by the Mountain Residential 3, or MR3, zone district, to allow up to 12 dwelling units, made up of either single-family dwellings, two-family dwellings, or a combination thereof. The subject property is in western Jefferson County. It is located west of Evergreen Parkway, between South Palo Verde Road to the northwest and Troutdale Scenic Drive to the south. The applicant is requesting to create this new planned development zone district, the Palo Verde Park Estates Official Development Plan, that would follow the MR3 zone district, allowing 12 dwelling units, which is more restrictive than the MR3 zone district. And those could be either single-family dwellings, two-family dwellings, or a combination. To clarify what a two-family dwelling is, in our zoning resolution, that is when there is one overall structure made up of two attached dwelling units that are each on their own parcel or lot. The maximum of 12 units, as stated previously, is more restrictive than would be allowed in the MR3 zone district, based on the size of the subject property and the minimum lot size in the MR3 zone district. The ODP also defines allowed wildlife-friendly fence materials and height, and requires at least 28% of the land area to be used as community parks and trails. Staff and the Board of County Commissioners review rezoning applications against the following criteria: compatibility with the surrounding area, conformance with the county's comprehensive master plan, or CMP, mitigation of negative impacts, infrastructure and service availability, and the effect on the health, safety, and welfare of the community. The first criterion is the compatibility with existing and allowable land uses in the surrounding area. The proposed uses are compatible with these existing and allowable land uses. The proposed zoning pairs well with the existing mix of residential, institutional, and commercial uses that are already surrounding the subject property. If rezoning is approved, the impacts to the surrounding community are expected to be minimal. The community level of C1, or Commercial 1, zoning that is along Evergreen Parkway allows for more intense land uses, such as gas stations and restaurants. The agricultural 2-zone district that is surrounding much of the west and south of this property also would allow uses like veterinary hospitals, in addition to single-family dwellings and agricultural uses. The proposed uses on this property through this ODP would be less intensive than the commercial uses allowed within the C1 and A2 zone districts, with comparable residential uses to those allowed in the surrounding area. The CMP contains goals and policies that are used to guide land use decisions. Staff has concluded this request is in conformance with the applicable goals and policies in the CMP. The Evergreen Area Plan of the CMP within the North Evergreen Activities Center area recommends residential and office residential mixed-use land uses for the subject area. Development uses are recommended to have a minimum of 25% of open space and trails, and the ODP has been drafted to allow a maximum of 12 dwelling units on the subject property with a minimum of 28% of the land area for community parks and trails. The subject property is identified as a high-wildlife quality area, and the ODP has been drafted to include language about wildlife-friendly fencing requirements. The subject property is identified as having a medium wildfire hazard, and if approved, a wildfire mitigation plan would be required at the subsequent preliminary and final plat process. The lighting standards in the Jefferson County zoning resolution for mountainous areas would apply to this property. No other specific community resources have been identified that would be negatively impacted by the proposed ODP. The existing road network and infrastructure have been determined to be adequate to support the proposed use of the site. Staff has not identified any negative impacts of the rezoning to the surrounding area that have not been mitigated. The ODP has restricted the number of residential lots to a maximum of 12. Community parks and trails are required on the subject property, and any fencing must be wildlife-friendly fencing. Outdoor lighting would be installed in conformance with mountainous area lighting standards in the Jefferson County zoning resolution, and the proposed uses will not result in significant light, air, odor, or noise impacts to the subject or surrounding properties. Visual impacts will be minimal. Staff's analysis found that existing infrastructure and services are available and adequate to support the uses proposed by this rezoning. If this request is approved, traffic to the site is anticipated to be minimal. Staff finds the proposed rezoning will not negatively impact the health, safety, and welfare of the residents and landowners in the surrounding area, and no unmitigated negative effects relating to the proposed rezoning have been identified. Public notification for this case was done in accordance with the regulations in the zoning resolution. Three comments and opposition were received. Two of the comments were concerned with an existing private access easement that is on the subject property, and how that might be impacted by proposed development. If this rezoning is approved, that easement would be addressed as part of the preliminary and final plat process. The third comment stated concerns about construction impacts on wildlife and the potential for increased unhoused populations from construction, but staff has not identified any unresolved citizen comments. Staff's analysis concludes that the proposed rezoning is in conformance with specific land use goals and policies outlined within the CMP, and therefore meets the land use recommendations of the CMP. Potential negative impacts to the surrounding area have been adequately addressed using development standards in the ODP, and infrastructure and services are adequate and available to support the proposed uses. Staff has no unresolved issues related to this rezoning application, and staff recommends approval of the rezoning request. If the rezoning is approved, the applicant would be required to submit a plat in order to develop the proposed uses on the property. The plat process involves an intensive review of the applicant's proposed lot layout, construction documents, grading, drainage, parking, landscaping, and other plans for compliance with county regulations. If the plat was approved, the applicant would then have to apply for permits. And this concludes my presentation. I am happy to answer any questions.
Great. Thanks so much, Ms. Homeyer, for that presentation. We appreciate it very much. I wanted to just check with you real quick before I see if commissioners have any comments or questions for you. Do we have, will we have a presentation from the applicant's team as well?
Yes, they have prepared one for you.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much. Commissioners, any questions or comments at this point?
Appeals.
All right. Well, with that, let's bring up the applicant's team. If you are with us, please come forward at this time. You're welcome to have a seat or stand at the microphone, whatever is convenient for you and most comfortable. And we will begin by asking you to please share your name, provide your address, and the clerk will swear you in. Welcome.
Now it is. I wasn't sure if it's lit or not. Again, my name is Richard Miller. I'm with Progressive Planning Services of Colorado. My address is 1123 Button Rock Drive, and that's in Long, Colorado.
Do you swear affirm that the testimony you are about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Great. Thanks, Mr. Miller, and again, welcome. Thank you for being here, and go ahead with your presentation.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Sarah. Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Again, my name is Richard Miller, Progressive Planning Services of Colorado. I represent the Joy O. Young Revocable Trust, who is the owner of the property. Ms. Young wanted to be here today, but due to medical reasons, she could not attend today's hearing. We're requesting that subject property be rezoned from its current zoning of Commercial 1 and Agricultural 2 to planned development, and this would be based on the Mountain Residential 3-zone district, allowing up to 12 dwelling units, made up of 3 Zone District, allowing up to 12 dwelling units made up of single-family, two-family dwellings, or a combination of the two. Next slide, please. Sarah did a good job of covering this, so I won't dwell on it, but this slide shows the subject 3.67 acre property and the surrounding properties in the immediate area. There are primarily residential properties to the west. To the east is a medical office building and a private religious school, with primarily single-family residential to the southeast off of Troutdale Scenic Road. As you can see, the area has a variety of land uses, including single-family, multifamily, commercial, and institutional uses. Our primary access is going to be off of South Palo Verde Road. Next slide, please. This map is from the Evergreen Community Plan, the subject properties in the North Evergreen Activities Center, and the land uses being recommended are for residential and office residential mixed use. The current zoning of C1 and A2 would allow a variety of uses, some of which are fairly intense land uses for the area. We feel that our recommended land uses, being residential, are very compatible with the land uses in the immediate area, and the planning staff has determined that our proposal is in general conformance with the applicable goals and policies of the Comprehensive Master Plan. Next slide, please. We are proposing two possible development scenarios for the subject property. This slide shows the eight single-family lot proposal. We're proposing a higher-end gated community, and there will be a landscaped area at the north entrance with a stone monument-style project identification sign. The proposed lot sizes range from 10,500 square feet to 19,650 square feet. This plan has over 28% community park area, including a 10-foot trail easement adjacent to the 20-foot internal loop road, and we've also provided a large community park on the north portion of the property. The internal road, which you're calling Palo Verde Loop Road, has been aligned with the existing driveway on the property where possible, and this is to help minimize grading needed for the road. The lots have been designed to accommodate building envelopes that were intended to minimize tree removal and preserve a significant rock outcropping that would be within Lot Number Eight. I wanted to mention that we recently modified the plan slightly by moving the entry gate on the west side of the property to the south, and we did this to accommodate an easement to an existing residence at 3972 South Palo Verde, west of our proposed development. And as Sarah mentioned, we will ensure that this access easement is accommodated at the time the property goes through the subsequent plating process, with the easement being documented on the future plat document. Next slide, please. This slide shows the second development scenario for the property with six two-family structures for a total of 12 residential units, with the structures having a common lot line through the middle of the structures. The internal loop road is identical with the 10-foot trail easement adjacent to the roadway, and in this plan, we have about 36.7% of the site being dedicated to community parks and trails. Again, we have accommodated the access to the existing residence at 3972 South Palo Verde Road. Next slide, please. These are our written restrictions for the Official Development Plan, again, having a base with the Mountain Residential 3 Zone District, with the exception of wildlife-friendly fencing. There'll be a maximum height of 42 inches, and the restriction of no chain-link fencing within the proposed development. We're also including a minimum of 28% community parks and trail within this proposed development. Next slide, please. We will be establishing a mandatory homeowners association, which will be created for the maintenance of the common open areas, security gates, trees and landscaping, pine beetle control, and the mailbox facilities. In addition, we'll have an architectural review committee that will be formed to review any new constructions or additions to the structures. They will monitor building colors, roofing, exterior materials, and help ensure that the housing is compatible with the mountain setting. Again, any items that aren't specifically covered by the written restrictions, such as lighting, will default to the Mountain 3 residential standards found in the zoning resolution. Next slide, please. This property has been designated as a high-quality wildlife area in the comprehensive plan, and, as I mentioned, we're limiting the fence height within the proposed development to accommodate the movement of wildlife through the subject property, and we'll coordinate further with the Colorado Division of Wildlife and Fish and Wildlife Service further at the time of subdivision plating, and follow their recommendations to accommodate the movement of wildlife. Next slide, please. This slide just shows some of the recommended fencing by the Colorado Division of Wildlife and the Rocky Mountain Elk Foundation. The goal is to minimize harm to wildlife, and this is representative of the fencing that we're proposing. Next slide, please. That concludes our presentation, and we want to thank the Board of County Commissioners for your time and consideration of our proposed rezoning request.
Great. Thanks so much, Ms. Miller, for your presentation. We appreciate it. Commissioners, do you have any questions or comments at this time?
I do not have any questions or comments.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We will next move to public testimony, and we'll be taking public testimony, I'm sorry, public testimony only on this issue from those of you who are here in person or who are joining us virtually. And if you're joining us online, please use the chat function to let the host know, Ms. Dejas, that you would like to testify on this issue. As a reminder, each person will have three minutes to testify, and those who are registered with their associations to testify on this item will have up to 10 minutes. Is there anyone in the hearing room who would like to testify on this land use case, this rezoning? All right. Ms. Dejas, do we have anyone online who'd like to testify?
No one online.
All right. With that, we'll go ahead and close this segment of public testimony, and I think we can go ahead and move forward with a motion if we're ready to do that. May I have a motion for hearing regular agenda item 11.1?
Yes, I move for the approval of hearing regular agenda item 11.1.
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Murat, would you please call the vote?
Commissioner Kerr?
Aye.
Commissioner Zenzinger?
Aye.
Commissioner Dahl Kemper?
Yes, and that motion passes. Thank you both very much for your presentations. Thank you. Next on our agenda is a second round of public comment, and I'll first ask, is there anyone in the hearing room who would like to provide public comment on a topic not on today's agenda? All right. I understand we do have a community member who is joining us virtually, Elaine McLaughlin. Ms. McLaughlin, would you like to go ahead with your public comment at this time? You have three minutes, and if you would share your address with us, we'd appreciate it.
I'm hoping you can hear me.
Good morning. We can hear you.
Excellent. Thank you so much. My name's Elaine McLaughlin, and I live at 7831 Scenic Drive in Boulder County. My comment is with regard to the Jeffco Airport. So we really appreciate the efforts to have Jefferson County study noise levels and appropriate mitigations in the, I guess it's the Part 150 study. My husband and I attended the open house on July 10th, and we've made some comments to the study's website. What we learned from the open house is that our particular neighborhood, as well as some surrounding ours, isn't included in the study boundary, and our neighborhood also includes Douglas Elementary School. So I did make the request to include it to the study staff, and I'm making that request to the Commissioners as well. Our neighborhood's been impacted by planes flying to and from Rocky Mountain Municipal Airport, and we've found that the vast majority of these flights are from the touchdown takeoff flight trainings from the airport to other airports nearby, Longmont, Erie, and Boulder. And the result of the trainings is pretty much near constant loud engine noise. In fact, I hear one right now. It's evident both in the day and at night, and both inside and out. It's been loud enough for us to stop conversations, and we've had these overflights as early as 5:00 a.m. and as late as 11:30 p.m. So this, it's loud enough to wake us up even though we have double-pane windows. We've moved here 23 years ago. It's only been in the past few years that this near constant overflight noise has become a significant nuisance, and it really does impact our daily lives. And so the uptick in frequency, we've also learned, is due to the four-flight training schools that have recently come online at the airport. We've recorded a number of videos that demonstrate how loud it is from the overflights, and I'm happy to share those with the Commissioners. So given the frequency of the flights, along with the pilots who are in training from the four schools, we also have a concern about increased potential for accidents as they're one after another and often fly in pairs. So we request the study include our neighborhood as well as those directly south, since we're just past the boundary. And I really appreciate your attention to the matter and appreciate you hearing me out, and I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you so much for your comments this morning, and I wanted to just share with you too, Ms. McLaughlin, that our airport director is with us this morning and heard your comments as well, along with the board and our county manager. Thanks for weighing in this morning. Ms. Dejas, do we have anyone else online who'd like to provide public comment at this time?
No one else.
All right. With that, we'll go ahead and close the second segment of public comment during the Board of County Commissioners' hearing, and we'll move next to reports. And we start with Commissioner Zenzinger, any reports you'd like to share this morning?
Yes, I have a few. The first of which is, I did attend my monthly Head Start meeting with the Family and Community Council, and a couple of key updates from there. Head Start did receive notice that they will have to go through another federal monitoring review in 2026, even though we just undertook a federal monitoring review this past year. In fact, we haven't even completed it. And normally, these are spaced out by five years or so, but we've been told that we're going to have to produce another federal monitoring review. So want to prepare the board for that. The reasons are to ensure that they are in alignment with a change in focus area goals from the federal government with regard to a number of different initiatives. So that is one. And two, also, Head Start received notification from the federal government around a change in policy concerning the new rules that would bar undocumented immigrants and some visa holders from programs that provide early childhood education, career and technical education, and healthcare. This new change in rule is being challenged in court. The state of Colorado has decided to join a lawsuit led by a New York attorney that argues that the Trump administration didn't follow the proper procedures in establishing these rules, and in fact, misinterprets the federal welfare law and puts an excessive burden on our local programs, who are suddenly expected to now verify the immigration status of thousands and thousands of people and families. So the Head Start staff are aware of the new rule proposals as well as the lawsuit, and so for now, everything is just paused and in limbo until there can be greater clarity on the outcome of the lawsuit and where our Head Start officials can get more guidance about following these new interpretations of the law. That was of some discussion at our last meeting, as well as a number of other issues. We are in the summer months, so our agenda was rather light other than that. Secondly, I did attend Dr. Cog this month. Dr. Cog, nothing of note particularly happened, although it was during the Dr. Cog meeting that we received notice of the passing of former mayor Marjorie Sloan. It was very fitting because Marjorie Sloan was a very active participant in Dr. Cog, and so I just wanted to note her passing and that our community has truly lost a real hero and champion for a better life in Golden and for Jefferson County. She devoted herself tirelessly to advocating for improvements to Golden and Golden's infrastructure and Jefferson County as a whole, and I had the great pleasure of being able to serve with her on Dr. Cog when she was mayor of Golden. So just wanted to alert the community to her passing and that there will be a celebration of life on August 2nd at 10:00 a.m. at the Golden Community Center, which is just very fitting for Marjorie Sloan. She was very impactful to the community. I also attended the Applewood Business Association luncheon this month, as well as a really fascinating lunch with an organization that many of you are familiar with called Plan Jeffco. They were the organization that helped establish our open spaces program here in Colorado in Jefferson County, and we discussed sort of the state of open space here in Jefferson County and discussed the new green print, which has just come out for public comment. So if you are interested in taking a look and commenting on that green print plan, you can do so on our website, and we are taking those comments for approximately one month. So we do encourage you to log on and provide comment. I also had the pleasure of attending the Taste of Arvada event, which is sponsored by the Arvada Chamber of Commerce, as well as another, a lot of other sponsors. And I just wanted to point out, there were many awards that were given, but the four that I want to point out is the best overall taste went to Futter's Catering, the best cocktail went to the Arvada Tavern, the best sweet treat went to La Petite Série Francaise, and the best coffee went to Ziggy's Coffee. And you can see all of the award winners on the Arvada Chamber's website, and just wanted to congratulate them on a very well-attended and great program. Also, I want to call your attention to the Engage Jeffco Commissioners' Corner this month. I had the privilege of being able to submit an article, and I focused on a service called Lookout Alert. In light of the recent tragedies and the floods that were happening in Texas, it was a good reminder that tragedy can strike anywhere, wildfires, floods, any number of emergencies. And one of the best ways to prepare yourself to receive emergency alerts is to sign up for Lookout Alert, and so I highly encourage everyone to do that. It's a very simple process. You can even customize or tailor it. You can even customize or tailor it to specific areas or the type of alerts that you would like to receive, such as a text alert or an email alert. But really encourage people to sign up for that Lookout Alert now before an emergency occurs. And then also had an opportunity to attend the Mountain Rail Coalition meeting. Things are really moving as far as mountain rail. This is a segment that will go from Denver all the way up to Grand County and beyond. And the segment that they are focusing on right now is up in the mountains between the Winter Park and Granby area. But pretty soon, it will be right here in the metro area. And you'll be able to take the train from Denver all the way out to the west. So I'm grateful to our county staff for entertaining a work session about this topic coming up. And I look forward to our discussions so that we can kind of be prepared for when the mountain rail starts here in Jefferson County. And then lastly, just want to thank the members of the Jefferson County Council on Aging for hosting a great meeting to talk about senior citizen issues and the ways that our elderly citizens in Jefferson County, what their needs and services are. And I want to thank them for their service and for providing us such great information and feedback about those senior services in Jeffco.
Excellent. Thanks so much, Commissioner Zenzinger. Commissioner Kerr.
Thank you. I too attended the Mountain Rail Coalition meeting. Commissioner Zenzinger, you said, quote, "Things are really moving." So you're saying things are on track, right? I was honored to be a speaker at the Clean Energy Legislative Academy. Our Center for the New Energy Economy brings together about three dozen legislators from across the country and across the political spectrum to here to Colorado each summer to discuss new energy legislation possibilities in our states. And so I was honored to be a speaker at that a few weeks ago. We did say farewell to our executive director of Jeffco EDC, Jansen Tidmore. Attended the West Cold Fact Civic Association meeting, albeit virtually, but did attend. So it was great to see so many folks at Turumo Blood and Cell Technologies for a fundraiser for the Action Center and their proposed potential, but hopeful, move to the Commons at Emory coming up. And fully support. It was, it was great that Turumo and their executive, their CEO was there to support. Saw many of the folks up here there at that event. Had fun at the Sheriff's Employee Appreciation Event, scooping some ice cream. I know some commissioners scooped more than others. But it was great to see the sheriff and all of her employees and their families having fun there. Was able to attend the Jeffco Food Policy Council meeting this month. Interesting thing there is that they presented the results of a Jefferson County food chain assessment to really, really points out the critical points at which food can either be delivered or not be delivered through what they call the food chain. And I think a lot of us take, take much for granted, even in our own shopping for food. But also when we think about, oh, you know, donate food to the Action Center or one of our other food banks, and then it gets delivered to people. You don't always think about the entire process and how food is collected at certain places and then gets to the, to the people who really need it. So that was interesting. And as we've all heard, food is, continues to be a need in our community. And it's, it's important to stay focused on these, these pinch points in the food chain. I attended the stand down that Bayard Enterprises had in supplying veteran services. You didn't need to scratch that out. I was, I was just going to mention it. Commissioner Dahl Kemper was there as well, had, had stirring words for, for everyone, which she's welcome to share. I was just going to mention. It is interesting, there are going to be some changes with Bayard. Their, their services, their, their programs are going to continue, although probably under different names at this point. But we attended that yesterday afternoon, early evening. I was, I attended the Together Jeffco Public Open House event. That was right down the hallway here. And this is a series of public open house events. I believe there were, I'm not going to say where they all were because otherwise Commissioner Dahl Kemper might be scratching more of her notes out. But the one was, was here last night. And then upcoming tonight is in Conifer at the Aspen Park Community Center. And Thursday is at the Columbine Library. And a great turnout last night. And I know that they've had good turnout at the other ones as well. I too wanted to mention Marjorie Sloan, hearing, hearing about her passing. I believe I met her about 15 years ago when I was serving in the, in the legislature. And she was mayor of Golden and came down to the Capitol with these big folders and presentations on Golden's vision of transportation in and around central Jefferson County. And just that her, her passion for, for solving problems and making sure that the entire community was represented. And, and she, I mean, I, I believe she was in some of our Jeff Tag meetings just within the last couple of months. So she was a passion advocate for her community right up until the very end. So wanted to mention that. Yesterday, after the Together Jeffco event, I went down to Denver and attended Mayor Johnston's State of the City address. And it was, had uplifting parts, had some pretty sobering parts. But I did want to give one quote that Mayor Johnston spoke about. And in, in his speech, he did, he is the mayor of Denver, so he was primarily talking about Denver, but he did talk about regionalism and Denver being, Denver and surrounding areas being, being a hub, capital of the New West, the Old West and the New West for Colorado, for the West, for our country. And one of the quotes I wanted to share from last night, he said, "We will carry forward the values that made the West great: optimism, opportunity, a connection to the land and to the world. But when we're asked again to choose inclusion or exclusion, we will choose inclusion. We will reject the hatred and division of the Old West and the cynicism and bullying of this dangerous new era. And instead, we will hold tight to the belief that we are stronger together, that we can build something together." Thank you.
Excellent. Well said. Appreciate that. And I want to add my remarks to, to the passing of former Golden Mayor Marjorie Sloan. I met her when I served on the Jefferson County School Board. And Marjorie also had a very deep passion for public education and equity, inclusion as well, and ensuring that all students were successful and had what they needed to excel in any way that they chose, any path they wanted to pursue that was their passion, and also ensuring that teachers had the resources that they needed to be successful with every child in Jefferson County. And she will be missed. She also had a biting sense of humor that I will never forget. And I'd love to share a story, but I don't think I'll do that publicly right now. It's a good one. I also just wanted to, to mention to, and add some new events as well to what Commissioners Zenzinger and Kerr added, but also wanted to mention that often commissioners, there's a combination of all three of us, or maybe two of us, who attend different events. And I also wanted to echo my thanks to Turumo for their support of the Action Center, very engaged in that project. On behalf of the Action Center, the Aging Council meeting we had. Also, the Sheriff's Employee Appreciation Event is a lot of fun every summer. Might have been triple digits, but the ice cream was cold and we dished out a lot. It was a lot of fun. And the stand down event was so critical in terms of services and programs for our veterans. You may not know this, but Jefferson County has one of the highest populations of veterans across the state. I had an opportunity to stop by the Together Jeffco Open House in Evergreen. Again, thanks to Chris, Christina, Heather, our entire Together Jeffco team who's there. We had some wonderful community members stop by, including Christie Green with Wild Aware. And she always thinks very strategically about the impact of growth and development on our beloved wildlife. She was there sharing feedback and more. Good to see Chief Ouija there with Evergreen Fire as well and many others. So thanks again to the team for the great work you're doing on that front. And Commissioner Kerr mentioned the locations this week. We sure hope you can make it and provide your input. It really matters in terms of how our communities grow and how they're shaped, in part, thanks to your input. I also attended the Conifer Chamber meeting this month. It's always good to be with local business owners, nonprofit leaders, to share updates and resources. Our chambers do so much for our local communities, and we appreciate them very much. I also had an opportunity to serve as a panelist on a panel discussion regarding housing costs and Jeffco's workforce, challenges, and solutions. Shared more about Jefferson County's 15-year housing plan, as well as the housing blueprint. Both Commissioners Zenzinger and I serve on the Jefferson County Housing Advocacy Steering Committee. Talked also about Commissioner Kerr's work on the Property Tax Commission to ensure that counties have the resources they need for affordable housing in our communities. And grateful to the three sponsors of that event, the Bell Policy Center, Golden United, and Jeffco Community Network. Really good conversation, lots of great questions from an engaged audience. Also, special shout out. All three of us celebrated alongside Jeffco Human Services Case Management Agency to celebrate one year of commitment, compassion, and connection. And in just one year, the Case Management Agency has helped 4,000 individuals in Jefferson County and Clear Creek County living with physical, intellectual, and developmental difficulties. Every person served by our CMA team brings their own story, strengths, and goals. And we now have a dedicated unified team to empower those goals through a person-centered case management approach. We just want to extend our huge congratulations on this significant milestone and thank everyone for breaking down barriers and building a more inclusive support system. Thanks so much for your great work on that front. And I am just skimming through to see, oh, one other fun, one other fun event. And a special shout out to County Manager Joe Kirby and, and the Jeffco team for help on this. The USBMX Mile High Nationals were in South Jefferson County last weekend, which was a lot of fun. I mean, there were, there were little kids like this big, you know, on their, on their bikes, doing those hills, up to adults. But the event kicked off Friday of last week, and it attracted more than 500 riders, this was a week ago, from across the country. And I wanted to send a big thanks to the organizers for the special commendation. And I accepted that on behalf of myself and our team for some help navigating issue that they had reached out to us about. So thanks again to our county manager and our team for help on that front. We're so excited that they chose South Jefferson County as the location for the competition. It was a lot of fun. And I'm just going to check my posted, oh, one other quick thing to mention. You heard Commissioner Kerr mention that we gave, we gave a fine farewell to EDC CEO Jansen Tidmore. And we're very excited to welcome our new EDC CEO, Carrie Kelly. And I want to thank all the members of the EDC Board who attended meet and greets to meet the finalists. I was proud to be part of the admin committee, which served also as the hiring committee for our next CEO. I'm so excited about the expertise that she will bring to this new position, and the enthusiasm and energy is high. So we look forward to welcoming her next month in August. And with that, I'll turn it over to County Manager Joe Kirby.
Good morning, Commissioners. Just a couple of quick reminders. Tomorrow, we have our annual Jefferson County Tech Showcase. That's always something fun to go to and see what state-of-the-art innovations our teams are working on within Jefferson County. In addition, over the next two days, Wednesday and Thursday, it's the Annual Human Trafficking Summit. And just a reminder to the board, I think you may be attending all or part of that. But just wanted to remind you of that. That's an important opportunity for us to talk about human trafficking and is in part sponsored by our Human Services Department. Thank you.
Excellent. Thanks so much, Joe. Next, we have our county attorney, Kim Sorrels.
No reports today. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. And with that, we want to thank everyone who joined us this morning, and especially our community members who spoke during public comment. And we'll go ahead and adjourn our public hearing. The board will reconvene with staff briefings in about 10 to 15 minutes, starting at around 10:45, a little bit earlier if we have everyone upstairs. Thanks so much.